We have Article 4. Let's just get a little comfortable in our chairs because this will also have a presentation and a discussion. Article 4 is positioned as a lease purchase of wood pellet boilers and energy equipment. And as I had mentioned during the introduction, shall the Clermont School District vote to authorize a school board to enter into a 20-year lease agreement for the installation of $6.1 million of energy savings equipment? Six point six. Six point one million dollars.
Six point one.
You have an old, you must have an old version of it, David.
I had an updated one that came out.
Printed it today.
Yeah.
There was seven versions today.
Of energy savings equipment.
I started with seven A, seven B, so when did you hire them?
Including but not limited to upgrades in lighting, insulation, windows, and new wood pellet hybrid propane boiler systems for the district's three elementary schools, Clermont Middle School and Stevens High School with annual lease payments of approximately $330,000. Such lease payments to be funded from annual energy savings in the operating budget. The lease agreement contains a non-appropriation escape clause. The vendor has guaranteed that the anticipated annual energy savings from the installation of this equipment will equal or exceed the amount of the annual lease payments. Which is very important. This therefore, going away from the wording article, is neutral to our budget. Dollars we will spend because we have to anyway for oil, for power, for utilities, that we will spend now in support of the lease. And with that lease, we will update the power plants across the, our facilities. And for those that know it well, updating, for example, the windows, 100 percent of the windows in the Clermont Middle School. And it is budget neutral to us. So what I'd like to do if I could, unless there are questions on this specifically as we've talked about it here, is take a chance to introduce representative from Johnson Controls, who we've been working with and discussing, has done the review of our current facilities. And we'll give a little bit of history on Johnson Controls. We'll give some history on this product, which has been done thousands of times around the country. This is not new. And just give a little bit more background and color to it, if that would be okay with everyone. Please, if you could. Yep. You'll have to come to podium and introduce yourself.
Certainly, thank you. My name's Ned Reynold. I'm with Johnson Controls. And I represent our Energy Savings Performance Contract business in Northern New England. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight and for the opportunity to have been working with you for approximately the past month to bring this possibility to you. For those who may not know who Johnson Controls is, the company, as Richard said earlier, I think Johnson Controls is a Fortune 100 company. It's now 128 years old. The founder, Warren Johnson, a professor at the University of Milwaukee. Back then, was the inventor of the first electric room thermostat. So that's where that comes from. That's where the name comes from. And in the 128 years since, Johnson Controls has grown enormously, of course. Again, based in Milwaukee, about two-thirds of the company, two other divisions work and supply various equipment to the automotive industry. One-third of it is called Power Solutions, supplies a whole lot of batteries, apparently. Some enormous percentage of all the car batteries in the country are actually made by Johnson Controls, although you'll never see the name on a car battery. Also big into hybrid car batteries now. Anyway, the one-third or so of Johnson Controls, the Fortune 100 company that I work for is called Building Efficiency. All about energy efficiency and energy systems in buildings. One marquee project that we've been involved in recently, I guess would be the Empire State Building. If anybody knows that building, it was renovated, energy systems and building envelope was renovated within the past, I think it was five, six years. And the energy use of the Empire State Building was reduced by 38 percent. So that's the kind of work that we do. Controls, Johnson Controls, just one part of, you know, energy systems. Other things being things like chillers and HVAC, heating, ventilating, air conditioning equipment, all kinds of things like that. So that's the company. I've been with Johnson Controls just about two years, actually. I live down in Portsmouth, where I actually served on the city council down there for four years, 2004 to 2008. So I respect all of your service and your commitment to your communities and doing what you do on these weeknights. So I have about 15 years in the energy field. Most of that before joining Johnson Controls two years ago was in policy advocacy and program implementation work in government and nonprofit center. So when I wanted to make a move into working with an energy company, to actually sort of work where the rubber meets the road, where the work gets done, Johnson Controls was the kind of company that I felt good about, good about going to. And my role is to work with school districts and municipalities across Northern New England to bring this, this business model and this way of getting projects done, which is called Energy Savings Performance Contracting, you know, to, as I said, school districts and cities and towns. So my favorite part of Tim's presentation a little while ago, when he had his spreadsheet up on the screen there, was where he showed the tax impact of each warrant article and the part where it said Article 4, zero. Zero tax impact. That's because, as Chairman Seaman said, Energy Savings Performance Contracting is about getting needed work done, making needed capital improvements with the money that you already have, which is your utility budget. And as, again, Chairman's very eloquent about it, you're going to spend that money, if you do nothing, you're going to spend that money. The item in the budget is just over $400,000 annually that you spend on utilities. If you make no improvements to your energy systems, you're going to keep spending that money. If you make improvements to the energy systems using this vehicle of Energy Savings Performance Contract, Contracting, the reason you work, you want to work with a company like mine that's in this business is because we guarantee that the savings generated by those improvements will pay for themselves over a defined term. The annual reduction in your utility bill can simply be shifted and used to pay the lease. So there's no net impact on taxpayers. And for this proposal, as the chairman said, we've looked at all the buildings and what we would propose to do is add wood pellet boilers to all your schools to completely replace the boilers in the high school and the middle school with wood pellet boilers and at the high school and middle school, a propane boiler as well, so that you can continue to have a backup fossil fuel boiler system. But the wood pellet boilers would be sized and integrated with the fossil fuel boilers in order to provide roughly 70 to 80 percent of the total annual heating load from the wood pellet fuel, which is a much lower cost fuel than oil or propane. So I guess with that, I'll stop and hope it was enough to begin and take any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Can you explain to us the maintenance plan that would go along with this? Is that plan designed for the full period of the lease agreement?
Strictly speaking, we do not include, we don't require you to include a maintenance plan with us for your equipment over the course of, over the course of the performance It is a condition of the contract that the equipment be maintained, you know, in accordance with good, good standard maintenance practice, you know, in order for the guarantee of savings to hold up. You have to maintain equipment or you can't guarantee its performance. You have, you know, I'll say, you have a, an excellent facilities manager in Nick Morrow. We were, like, colleague and I were very impressed with him is when we went around and walked through all the schools, looked at the boiler systems and just talking to him and questions we'd ask him, he'd turn around and he'd have, he'd pull out some information and he, he had the answer for us. So what I'm saying is, the equipment has to be maintained. We don't require you to have a service contract with us to maintain it. Some of our competitors in this field do that as a matter of practice. In other words, they'll tell you, you're going to save $160,000 or $200,000 a year. And then they'll say, oh, but a provision of the contract is that you have to have a $50,000 service contract with us. So they kind of give and take, give with one hand, take with the other. We don't do that. You may also be alluding to the monitoring and verification plan. In other words, how, how do we guarantee that the savings are there? That's designed and written, that's part of the contract that we sign upfront. So you know how savings from each measure, each thing that we do, you know how the savings are going to be measured and verified. And then we have, as a part of our team on the project, from the beginning, an engineer who's called the Performance Assurance Engineer. And so he's responsible for ensuring that what we design and install is going to perform. And he's the one who maintains the ongoing relationship with you to annually, you know, monitor and verify to you that you're getting the savings you were promised.
So we purchased the equipment from you. Are you also supplying us the manpower to install it or?
Oh, yes. We, it's design, install, and train to. We train your, your people on, you know, control systems. If we do any control, you know, building control systems with it, obviously control systems to the boilers, we train your, your folks on it. Yeah.
So if we were to look over the 20 years of the plan of the lease agreement, and we acknowledge that there is a certain amount of time for the warranty, and I would think that the warranty would include service on the system until the warranty expires, then would you recommend to us how we can make sure there's somebody local who can maintain and take care of anything that happens to the equipment?
Yes. Yes. We would, everything that is installed comes with warranty, a warranty, of course, in accordance with standard industry practices, you know, boilers have long-term warranties, other kinds of things, you know, lights might have a one-year warranty, those kinds of things. All stuff, everything comes with, with a warranty. And yes, then we advise you on how best to maintain it. It's common that many school districts have either, as I said, excellent in-house staff, but also, of course, supplemented with local service contractors that they, you know, that they know and like, and that also know their buildings and know their equipment. And we don't, that's why we don't require the service contract with us, because it's not our intent to displace any of those relationships.
So the other question I have is regards to the hot water. I'm sure you've seen the hot water system that's attached to the boilers at Stevens High School. What is your plan for installing the hot water part of the system for the heating plant?
To be honest, I can't really tell you the detail, the details of, of an engineering plan yet because we haven't, we haven't gotten that far. The first time we got here was about a month ago, right? Tim, so to take a look at everything.
I know the hot water, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's right.
I know the hot water in the tank has to be around 200 degrees in order for it to be 90 degrees when it hits the other end of the building.
Yeah, it sounds high. That's, that's clearly an area of inefficiency, waste that, that exists now that we would, we would definitely intend to remedy.
Great. And I have one further question. You're recommending changing the windows at the middle school. Did your company also change the windows of the Empire State Building?
We did.
Wow.
And in fact, not only did we, well, that was a really unique project, obviously, but yeah, there was so much labor involved in, in renovating windows, working on the windows, that they actually cleared out a couple of floors of the building and they took the windows out, you know, little bit by little bit, and renovated them on site.
If I, if I could, just, I have a question here. When we were talking with the representatives from Johnson Controls, it's, it's not just as easy as going in and taking one boiler out and putting a new boiler in. The first thing that was mentioned is, is changing the load on the building, which is why we're looking at the windows, which is why we're looking at insulation. There's no way to get the savings out of the middle school if we don't solve the rack, if we don't solve the inlet. So the first question was, how do you reduce the load? The next question is, how do you modify what the heating plant is? And then the ongoing maintenance and measurement that goes along with that. So the process is about first reducing how much heat you need, then rightsizing your plants in order to cover, in order to cover what we've got. What this plan also allows us to do is because of the reduction of costs on utilities, it's giving us the ability, whereas originally we were planning on just replacing the windows on the south side of the high school, along Middle Street?
Summer.
Summer Street, thank you, along Summer Street. With this, with this, the savings that we would be getting here, it gives us the investment dollars to replace the windows all the way around Stevens High School. So what we're able to do is create a much more efficient building. We're not just using a lower-cost fuel, we're creating a more efficient building, which admittedly the first thing I heard from the superintendent was, we're going to build this into the curriculum. This is what we need to be teaching our young people about as it relates to sustainability. So it's an interesting approach, but Heather?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for coming tonight. I actually, it's actually more of a question for administration. I know that we recently contracted with another organization on, on energy saving methods. And I know that in a lot of ways, we're talking a little bit apples and oranges here, but I was wondering, two questions. First is, was this in any way incorporated into part of their plan that they had for us, to help us move forward in an energy-saving environment? One. And two, would we be able to somehow or another incorporate what we are currently saving on those utilities by doing what we moved forward with then, and show what we will be saving if we go this route now? So both of those savings, putting them somewhere and having a discussion about it, might be very beneficial to get this passed? And so that was my question.
First of all, when we developed, we made a presentation to you and we approved our initiative with Energy Education Incorporated, which has now changed its name to Synergy and continues to grow, this was not on the horizon. And we went with Synergy because we were just throwing dollars out the window with energy loss. We were just, not to mix words, we were wasting money because we could not control the energy. And so the intent was to establish a cost-effective way and if any savings, reinvesting. Very slow process, but over a 10-year period, the anticipated savings would be over $2 million. I talked with Synergy today. I explained to them what, about the warrants, about the efforts, about the building of Stevens High School, about our hope and goal for the entire district. They were ecstatic, ecstatic. And it's going to greatly complement the theme of working with Synergy. We are going to continue that working relationship with Synergy. It's not going to end after a successful effort with the biomass, with all of these warrants, with Stevens High School, with the other schools. Because the effort of being sensitive about behavior, adult behavior, student behavior is a direct relationship to reducing costs. So regardless of the future, our effort is going to be continued. And as the chairman said, this isn't just about Clermont School District. This is a lifelong behavior pattern that if children can appreciate and learn, they'll protect the environment and they'll save themselves money. Long-winded answer, but it's a nice fit, unanticipated, but a very nice fit.
We have Charlene next, and then Kirsten, and then Jean.
Ned, I had a question for you in the process, as you go further along, should we do this? In the contract or addendum to the contract or appendix to the contract, is there a chart that gives you an idea of what the life expectancy of each of the items are that you put into the buildings to make them more efficient? And the reason why I'm asking this is, because this is entering into a 20-year lease and is part of our strategic maintenance plan that we're developing. It would be good to know, to have that information so we could fold it into, you know, the long-term maintenance needs as we move forward.
Yes, absolutely. That's something that we can, particularly because we'd be looking at a, especially long-term lease in this case, that's something we could definitely.
So that can be included?
Make that part of your plan.
Again, you were the process and just looking for a little clarification.
We haven't seen one of these before.
How would this actually affect the bond for the school? Wouldn't this help result in some savings, seeing as we're doing things with, you know, replacing windows and such? Would that help create some of that surplus we were talking about that could be rolled back in against the bond? Or is that not something that happens?
No, 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 this is, you're absolutely right. The level of savings, which we're including in the article here, supports 6.1 million of capital improvements. The recommendation that's being made by Johnson Controls after their walk-around is that in order to get the improvements that they say for the, at least the 300, 330,000, would be approximately a $5.1 million of investments that they're requiring to get those savings. That in effect leaves us with another million dollars worth of capital improvements that we can do to further improve the buildings, which is why we have now the dollars available to do all of the windows in Stevens, why we have the dollars available to do insulation throughout Stevens. So it dovetails together a renovation project with this opportunity to receive this level of capital improvement, capital, that comes together and therefore gives us the opportunity to even more at Stevens, which potentially, because we're improving all the windows as opposed to just one side, and all the insulation as opposed to this one side, further reduces the load, which further improves the amount of savings we'll have. But that would be, the 6.1 million is our level of capital investment, and then looking to have even greater than the $330,000 of savings that have been identified. Does that, does that help? Okay?
I wanted clarification, not only from you, but anyone watching, if you see it.
Absolutely. And understand, when, the, the life of the boilers, for example, at Stevens, for anyone who's been on the tour, we're past useful life on those boilers. I think, there are four of them in there and only two work, I believe.
Well, half of one.
Half of one works? At the middle school, we're beyond the useful life. We have three in there and one just stopped working. And the other two are holding together. So I mean, this isn't, this isn't a nice-to-have to improve our, you know, some of these, we're going to do it now, we're going to do it in the near future. I mean, and we all know about the windows at the middle school. Anybody who's been there, had their kids up there, knows that. So this is, it is an inevitable capital expenditure. This is an opportunity to do it funded through a performance agreement with the, with the support. Jean?
Just to make sure, Ned, you're only working on the power plants. Is that correct?
No, that's, that's not correct.
Well, let me finish my question, and so maybe I'm wrong. I'm wondering, like, putting a higher-toned engine into a car whose transmission is not ready for it, will the piping, the distribution systems for Bluff, this is the hard Maple Avenue, the middle school and the high school, is it in conjunction with what Banwell and Hutter have planned? I mean, will, the furnaces sound great, the boilers sound great, will we be able to use the distribution equipment that we have, or will those also have to be changed?
Okay. Excellent question, and a few points in there I want to respond to. First of all, whatever we would propose to do will, will absolutely be fully integrated with whatever Banwell and whatever project, you know, Banwell designs for Stevens. We've done this before. Johnson Controls has done this. We do this a lot. You know, come in and work in conjunction with a sort of a major renovation to a building, and then we focus on energy systems because, I should even say, you know, energy systems, energy-related components of a building, because that's what we do, comprehensive building energy efficiency. So energy-related components of a building is everything from boilers to windows to insulation to, you know, weather stripping under the doors. It runs the gamut. And it, and it has to go all together in order to work the way it does. As Dennis Richards says, you, you're trying to maximize energy savings, and so you have to look at things in a logical order, and you have to absolutely account for the way they, they interact. Or, you know, it doesn't make sense to come in and put in a great new boiler system and make it a certain size, you know, if you haven't sealed the leaks in the roof. You know, you're just making too much heat and you're paying too much for the boiler. It's bigger than it needs to be. So the piping systems, we, of course, we look at that. If we propose to, you know, replace a, install a new boiler, piping system, it has to be connected, the heat gets distributed through that piping system. Excellent example in this project, the middle school still has, half, half of the middle school is still heated by steam, and half is through, the newer part is through hot water. Most systems, modern systems are hot water. Steam systems still work, but they are kind of relatively high maintenance. So our proposal would include replacing the, this, unfortunately, you can't convert a steam piping system to a hot water piping system. It just doesn't work, it's different. So our proposal and our costs that we've estimated at this point include replacing that piping system to now be a hot water system, just like the newer half of the school. Now the heating plant will work. Now the heating plant will work, you know, more efficiently throughout the whole school. So.
And then we've, we've had one meeting where Johnson Controls and Banwell had a chance to, to try and be sure that we integrate the efforts that we do have included in the estimate for the renovation. There are monies in there for heating, ventilation, air conditioning, there are monies in there for plumbing. And we've worked with, with Gary and with Ingrid and her team on how do we bring this together. Now admittedly, they haven't had time to fully integrate, but these exact questions were asked and we'll have to be sure that, that we, that we get the benefits.
I've got another half a day left here.
Good question. Another piece, just so, we also look at this, for example, on windows, and I just want to clarify from what David had said, we, we can and would look to work with local contractors. You're not gonna see a bunch of Johnson Control trucks show up and they're gonna start footing. So when it comes to things that we have our own expertise here, and windows, you know, we have two, you know, excellent window businesses here in town, we'd look to work with the local, with local businesses on, on doing that work. Johnson Controls is not telling us who to work with, Johnson Controls is telling us what needs to be done in order to guarantee the savings. And then we'll work with our own, with our own people, we'll work with our own businesses in town. So there's also a benefit from that side, 'cause I know we've asked before, how do we work with local, with local vendors and with local, with local people? Dare I ask, Ingrid, anything from your perspective you'd like to bring forward as it relates to this? Have we hit pretty much all of it?
I think you've hit most of it. I think it's a very exciting possibility. I'm sorry. I think you've hit most of it. I think we've opened the discussion, and I think it's a very exciting possibility for the district to embrace. And it's been a proven thing that they've done with many different schools. And our mechanical engineer and contractors will have to have a lot of discussions back and forth on what we're planning, what they assumed, energy savings that we're doing versus what they were doing, so that it does all integrate together.
Okay. Other, other questions from the board?
If we save enough money, can we turn the heat back on? I'm just saying.
I'm not gonna say anything, but.
I'm just asking.
Can you get that word into the contract, please?
Please.
What do you need from us? I believe that we need now the same.
Yes, motion. Yes, you need a motion recommending that we move forward this one article that's presented.
Okay.
Yes.
Cynthia Howard Ward, too. Now I would like to know how much you expect the schools to use, how many ton of wood pellets, and what would the cost be?
I don't, I don't have that number in my head, actually, right now.
As a part of it, as a part of it going forward, it's a good question, and we'll, and we will, we will get you the answer for that. We really aren't down that road far enough, Cynthia.
And also, does it, when you would remove the existing boilers, is that in the 6.1 million dollars in disposal as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Now, this is a 20-year lease, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Does this lease include any upgrades on systems or anything? Heating systems are getting like computers, they always need upgrading. Are we stuck with the same one for 20 years, or do, does a lease upgrade this at any time?
I think that's a really good question, and as you had mentioned earlier, on the need to maintain and the need to continue to pay attention to our systems, we would need to incorporate into our budgets in the future the pool of dollars necessary either to upgrade or to continue to be able to utilize. But we can't go in here expecting an investment today without any attention to it is going to last us for 20 years. So what you're raising is exactly right. We've got to continue to improve and upgrade as it goes along. The system that's being created supports that 20-year period.
Add additional costs?
No additional costs, but we would be evaluating during our budget hearings, not me, hopefully someone else on this board that'll be doing it, saying, it's time to upgrade a system because this is what is now available, these are the savings we can expect from it, future conversation.
Without a lease, what would we be paying for this system instead of leasing it?
I, I don't think I can answer that question. What I don't think I can answer that question, what we're looking at is, there's a $6.1 million capital investment that's taking place. I would expect that we would be paying approximately $6.1 million between, you either lease or you borrow and pay interest.
This leasing company is not doing it for nothing.
And neither would a, anyone who would bond the cost.
Right, so should we be checking out the difference between the two?
Absolutely correct, and that will be going on as we continue down through the contract. Yes.
I could, I'll give you a bit of an answer to that. The lease is really a financing vehicle. It's a long-term capital lease. You own the equipment from the moment we install, after we install it. The, the long-term capital lease is a, is a financing method, basically. Because remember, it's not just equipment, like, it's not just this table or something, it's caulking in the, in the, you know, leaks between the roof, it's, you know, light, lights, it's control systems, it's wires, it's not just one thing, it's a whole bunch of things that we're gonna do, that we're gonna install, that will belong to you.
Absolutely. And, and if you, if you don't save us what you say you're gonna save us, what do we get back out of that lease? Do you pay us the difference between what we didn't save and what we spent?
Yes. We do the annual monitoring and verification in accordance with the contract that we established upfront, and if we should have a shortfall in savings, we'll write you a check and then we'll ask you if you'll allow us to.
That comes to me personally.
Thank you.
Ask you if you'll, if you'll allow us to, you know, fix what the problem was, we'll wanna identify the problem, why didn't we save the energy, was some control system not working correctly, or was there a leak somewhere, or, so we'll write you a check, or we'll hopefully fix it. If it's something that sort of can't be fixed because it's kind of an infrastructure thing, like, it doesn't make sense to tear it all apart, then we'll offer you sort of value-added, something else, can we install something else at our cost?
That's what I'm talking, that would be like an upgrade.
Yeah.
Add additional cost, or?
If, if it was a remedy for a shortfall, it would not be at additional cost, it would be at our cost. I will say that across the country, Johnson Controls shortfall rate is approximately 1/2, 1%. So, we have the best engineers in the business working for us, and the best installation contractors, project managers, so we don't miss the market that we established earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Motion to approve Article 4? And do we have a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
I'd just like to add, the high school has four boilers, they're almost 100 years old. They were installed originally as coal boilers and converted to oil. Up until very recently, only one of them was working. And they finally got a second one working, which enabled them to keep Stevens High School open during the recent cold snap we had. If that second boiler had not been made operational, the school would have had to have been closed until we got through the cold snap. So, we are at the threshold of having to really address the heating system in that building. We have no choice. And this is an incredible opportunity, which is so timely for us to embrace.
I'd also just like to point out, just to, please come to the information sessions and the community sessions we're going to have as Banwell continues to fine-tune the design as far as where we store those pellets, the ability to use the current chimney, the current stack, we don't have to change the exterior of the building. So there's some things that Banwell, given this, are working through to keep the cost down and utilize what we currently have. Further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, can we have a roll call, please, ma'am? It wasn't asked for, would you like a roll call? Thank you.
Hello, Iris?
Yes.
Jane Rollins?
Yes.
Kristen Jensen?
Yes.
Shawnee Love?
Yes.
Dave Buss?
Yes.
Ryan Ratt?
Yes.
Jim, Richard Seaman?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, appreciate it. We now have an article related to a negotiated agreement with Claremont Association of Maintenance and Trans.